We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clark, if you would take a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Case Snow. Ms. Ricklue.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Washington.
Present.
Seven councilmembers present and one absent.
Thank you. We have Pastor Williamson back. Long time no see, sir. Good to see you back.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful tonight to have this opportunity to come before you and give you praise for the goodness of this day, for your love and for your strength that you afford each of us in our daily walk with you. We're fortunate, Lord, to live in the community that we live, where people work together to help one another, regardless of the need, and that is a gift that can only come from God. We're thankful, Lord, to have good people leading this city. That's not a political statement. It's a fact of our lives. These folks are dedicated to the work that's before them. Equally, are we fortunate to have folks from the community who serve on commissions and boards and do hard work to see that this city has direction each day, each week, each month, throughout our year. For all of these, I want to especially give you thanks tonight. I'm grateful, Lord, for our mayor and councilpersons, our administrative staff, and those that lead departments throughout our city. I pray, Lord, that you'll continue to guide and direct those that are on the ground every day, keeping us safe and moving forward as one. I pray for this session tonight and for any discussions that are held and any decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you, and I pray and give you thanks for the community that has come in to participate and share in this session. I lift up, Lord, all of those that are part of the city family, who continually need your perpetual care and love each day. I just pray, Lord, that you'll bless every life, every need. Bless our nation and our world, those that grieve and mourn, those that suffer. I pray, Lord, today for the doctors and nurses and those that continue to work through Corona, so that all of us can be careful, do the work that we need to do, live by the guidelines, and help one another. Lead this session tonight. We ask it in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we have comments from visitors. Anyone here wishing to speak to the council? We'll give you five minutes. Just step up to the podium and state your name and address. And I'm assuming Helen does not want to speak, so we'll move on. All right. Next up, we have a great, great presentation here from State Farm Insurance. We had a request for a stoplight. Well, not really a stoplight, but a safety light near school, and we've... They've reached out to us and offered to submit a very generous donation to make that happen. So at this time, we have from State Farm, Don Woodson, Russ Wayland, Dr. Holly Broadway from Bush Elementary, Beverly Gray, former councilwoman, and Kyle Brummer to introduce or present with these folks. And I'll come down at this time to take the big money, the big check.
Just a few words before we get this going on. Really appreciate all these guys coming in and obviously appreciate the donation. Bev Gray mentioned these traffic beacons and keeping the kids safe over there at Bush Elementary. And, you know, I went to Kathy and Gala to see if they could find a grant for us, and they found one. They came up with a State Farm grant. And Don and Russ and everybody at State Farm has stepped up to the table to help us out and mainly the kids out and keeping everybody safe as we can in the community. So we really, really appreciate them.
With that said, Don?
Sure. Well, I just want to make sure and let you know that Russ and I are the local agents that live here in town and pay taxes and do all that stuff. And it's really exciting for us and for the 19,000 agents in America and the 59,000 employees that we have that State Farm has practiced being a good neighbor for a long, long time. And so they started this Good Neighbor Citizenship Philanthropy Program, which is where this grant's coming from. And it's fun to see the history of what we've been able to contribute to our local community. And so anyway, we're proud of that. Russ is?
So our corporate folks wanted to be here, but they haven't been cleared to get out of there, what they call their spider holes, so they are not with us tonight.
If they want to come back for a photo op in three or four months, we'll set it up again.
I'll let them know. So tonight, we're here to recognize the City of Fulton and your work towards a school safety zone. All of us at State Farm are very proud to support programs like this and all of the work our city's done to keep our students safe. With that, we're very proud to present to you the City of Fulton State Farm Good Neighbor Citizenship Grant Check for $7,200. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we make sure and get Beverly in this, too?
Yeah, Beverly, get up there.
Beverly, get up there, young lady. She's the one who brought it up. That's cool. There you go.
Thank you, Beverly. Thank you.
I believe there is about a $1,000 match to it, by the way.
Hey, Kyle. This sheet you gave us, is this what you're going to be putting up or?
Yeah, forgive me. I gave you guys a little handout. This is an example of what we would be putting up. The State Farm logo would be on top. The one that's on there right now is not... is an old one, but we'll make sure that we get the... We've already got the right artwork for it, so it'll be beacons just like that with the mile per hour and how fast they're going underneath the speed limit.
Wood Street is...
On both sides.
Wood Street is 20 miles an hour, not 25.
It's just an example.
Example. That's all I was hoping for.
Yeah, it's just an example. And, you know, with that, I do think that we would visit the speed limit and the parameters on Wood Street, you know, with that, too, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we had the consent agenda up for approval tonight. We have the city council meeting minutes of June 9th and the director's report of May. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve both the June 9th council minutes and the director of administration report.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove the director of administration report, please.
Very good. Have a motion?
And just as a point of clarification, real quick, this also includes the appointments that you see down below. So Councilman Braun, does your motion still stand with those appointments included?
Yes. I'm okay with all of that.
And it's just Councilman Simmons. I apologize. I'm looking at Councilman Simmons and I'm saying Braun.
Yes, my motion does include those.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, one point of item. Councilman Washington, just so you're aware, in case you're not, appointments, you cannot vote and approve an appointment of a family member to any of the boards, in case you weren't aware of that.
Thank you.
So just wanted to bring that up before you voted on something, and maybe that wasn't a piece of the protocol that you weren't aware of.
Thank you.
So if any of those appointments are
We're good.
relations to you, you'll need to bring that to the speaker.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, so I still have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second it, yep.
Okay, a motion and a second to pull off the DOA report. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
So those items are actually approved now, and now we can go ahead and discuss that DOA report.
Okay. It's an abbreviated report, of course, with all the absenteeism going on, but do you have any specific questions there?
I did have a question on... and there are several departments. I specifically, and I gave Kyle a little heads up. Normally Kyle has a wonderful piece in the DOA report, but I just was curious on the status of the airport, the new hangars, its grant money.
Yes, I would love to have a piece of the airport in this agenda today, but we are still working through an item on the quality assurance with our engineers, and we do believe we have that settled right now. And next meeting, you should be seeing an approval for a contract with those engineers and also the overall contract with Versloys and grant documentation, everything else. So my hope, and I'll be really upset if I don't get that in next meeting, because, hey, we're July 4th, it's just around the corner, you know. It's a good time to be doing some work.
I just know that, Kyle, at one point, we were waiting for the state, so the state has replied, and we are all good to go on the state grant money.
On the... Actually, on...
Because there was two parts of the federal and the state.
Right. As far as money goes, there was... We were actually $20,000 shy to support the whole six. We did get feedback from the state that they were going to come up with $20,000 to support that, so that's good news. We also received the CARES Act money for $30,000 that can help prop up our matching funds, too, with it. So it's less money out of the coffers that we've got to come up with, so. Did I answer your question?
Yes, it does, very much. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. Are there any other questions on the DOA report?
I just had one other one, and I don't know whether it's due to our new computer system, but Chief Kofelt, I really like the little bar graph and stuff. Is that due to our new computer system that allows you to do it that way?
Yes, that's part of the program. We got the grant board.
Excellent.
Very good. State of the art.
A lot easier to look at, but thank you. That's all.
Makes more sense, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Again, the activity's been busy. It's just been... It's been a weird year. So next DOA report should look a little bit more normal, and going forward, we'll keep getting... heading in that direction. So we appreciate all the work that our staff's doing.
Motion to approve the director of administration report.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Thank you. And moving on, we've got the financial report for May. Ms. Holschlag, if you would, give us a little rundown there. It looks pretty surprisingly okay.
Well, I will tell you the same thing I told the utility board yesterday, and that is, don't pay attention to the month-to-date numbers. Look at the year-to-date. The last two months have been topsy-turvy. We've not charged penalties. We've not done shut-offs. We've waived the credit card fees for a period of time. We did estimates in April and in May. It caught up. So if you look at that, that will give you a much truer picture. I'll also tell you, and I'm shocked, that our sales tax collections are right in line with the same period of time last year. So I keep thinking next month. Yes, but we're seeing. Time will tell.
Kathy, with June 15th being the cutoff date for bills being due for the electric... We have a lot of good response from citizens with the ads that we ran and everything else, or not.
No, no.
Okay.
We had a handful of people call in asking if they could make some arrangements to pay their past due balance. When we sent out cutoff notices, which says, here's your past due balance, you need to pay by this date or we may shut you off, we had about the same number that we normally do.
So it didn't go up and it didn't go down?
The number of shut-off notices did not go up. I've not yet seen the...
Drop dead day.
Yeah. Because they still have another 10 days or less, probably five, six at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Anybody has?
Motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the report?
Keep bringing us good numbers on the sales staff.
Yeah, I wish I could just wave a magic wand.
Very good. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, moving on with new business. We have Susan Grant here on behalf of Mid-Missouri CASA. She'll present a request for a fee waiver for the Voices of Callaway event on Monday, August 3rd at Memorial Park. Susan?
Thank you for letting me come tonight. I thought I was starting to lose my voice when I walked in here. I don't know what all that's about. So, anyway, I am the community director of Callaway County for Heart of Missouri CASA. We work with abused and neglected children in foster care, and we have been active in Callaway County since 2013. We're part of the 13th Judicial Circuit, and Boone County has been active since 2005. And we've been here since 2013. We started with three advocates advocating for three children. At the present time, we're working with 62 children, and we have about 29 or 30 active CASAs, but we've trained almost 50 in the past six years. So we started in 2015, and for the last five years, we've done Voices of Callaway. We get people who love to sing and share their voice and raise money. So the person who raises the most money becomes the voice of Callaway. So this year, what we're going to do is we're going to go back through the years, and we have people singing from every year that we've had Voices of Callaway. Mrs. Washington is going to sign for us this year, because we do have a deaf family that we work with. And then I have another group of siblings that are going to sing, because last year, we did only kids. So they sang for their peers last year. So this year, we're kind of throwing it all together. We've always had it either at... Most of the time, it's been at First Baptist Church. Southside, we had it Baptist Church, and we had it our first year at Westminster. And we are moving it outside this year because of all the COVID issues that we're facing, and we'd like to see if we could waive the fee for Memorial Park Pavilion.
And will we waive the Pavilion rental fee for CASA's fundraising event?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. It's a wonderful cause, Suzanne. We appreciate your work there.
I don't know the total number. I started to look that up before I got here, but we've probably served... There's about 200 kids in care, and we usually are trying to get to halfway to the kids, but we're usually running about a third of those kids. But as we know, we can't control kids coming into care, so that's why CASA's important, so that we have somebody to be an advocate for the kiddos.
Susan, my wife roped me into...
I know. She sent me your picture, and I said, is he with you? And she goes, I think so. We haven't worked that out yet. So you all have to come and support Ella and Bobby at the event.
How could we say no now?
So you don't want me to sing?
No, I want your money.
No, that's right. So if somebody is wanting to make a donation, how do they go about doing that?
Go to our website, which is H-O-M, stands for Heart of Missouri, CASA, it's on the back of the pamphlet as well, dot org, and you'll check on the events, and you can make a donation in anybody's name or nobody's name, but you can make it Ella's name. And she gets... Like, if you donate $10, she gets 10 votes, because it's a dollar a vote. I'm drumming up money for you, Bobby.
About $100 from each council, isn't it?
We currently have two $500 donations for the same person, so I'm going to have to get out there and beat the bushes.
Excellent. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. We're moving along pretty quickly here. We have council concerns tonight, next up. Start on my right with Mr. Washington.
I have none at this time.
No concerns. Okay. Mr. Stone?
I have an item, but I'm drawing a blank at the moment, Mr. Mayor, so I may ask you to come back to me.
Okay. You get one shot at this, buddy. Councilman Simmons?
Yes. Our electric department head will take care of that.
We're going to do a little bragging tonight. I'm going to pass this around to you folks. Most of you know that we're a member of the American Public Power Association, which is for municipalities, and it's like 2,000 public power organizations in the country, and about 1,400 of them belong to APPA. Everybody in this company worked very hard to get this award. I mean, it goes over... It's talking about reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. So I think, as everybody knows, we've got a lineman training program.
Yes.
And we're putting people through that. You all fund it. We just put in service a new 69,000-volt breaker that we bought this year. That was about $47,000. That gets rid of our... That's our last oil breaker on the 69 side. That breaker was put in service in 1969. And we've been doing a lot of underground because the road works to help reliability. But Kathy Holschlag put a lot of work in this. So did Michelle. So did Mr. Boone, because we had to give all the past budgets, and everything showing that the city was committed to improving the systems. So we got the top award. We have got the award before, but never the top-rated award. So we got that one. And then, as things go, when you get that one, we got another one for reliability. They got something called the SADI. It don't matter what that is.
One thing I'd just like to add, you know, Darryl's bragging on a lot of the people that put the application together and put the packet together, but the real credit for the award goes to the guys in the field that are keeping the trees trimmed, that are keeping the wires hung, that are keeping the lights on. You know, the administrative... Nothing against you guys, but...
No, but good.
You know, the administrative side provides the support to the guys in the field so that they can do their job the way their job needs to be done. But the award is... We earned it due to the exemplary job that the crews do in the field every day and every night. It's... We have super staff, not only in the electric department, but across the city. Great, great employees. Sorry.
Well said. Thank you.
I think that's also a good sign of good leadership, who takes the lead and to push the employees to achieve to what marks that they... what you're trying for, so I compliment you.
Thank you. The reliability award, as I said, it's... We got it on a SADI rating, which it doesn't matter what that is. What you do is you take all the minutes... The power was out all over town for each customer. You take it... You sum those minutes. You divide it by the number of customers. We got in the top quartile of the nation, and to get to that mark, you had to be 52 minutes or less average. We was 23.6.
And that's for a month, a year?
That's for a year. That's for 2019.
I know. I don't lose power in my house.
What he's saying is, the average electric customer in town was without power for 23 minutes last year.
That's pretty darn good.
That's awesome. That's pretty good.
The average for the nation was 143 minutes. So of everybody turned in data of all utilities, co-ops, munis, IOUs, the average is 143.
I'm proud of that.
Now, Craig Stubblefield and the power plant guys, they worked hard for this. Whenever they seen a meter flicker or something, they called it out, and the guys on regular time went and checked, and a lot of times, they found it lose connection. They found this or that. But they also put in to the system what caused the outage at the power plant. Was it a squirrel? Was it... We needed to trim something? And that kind of helps everybody, because a lot of times, you get... One serviceman goes out. He's on call this week, and he goes by Jeff's house, and it was a tree needs trimmed, whatever. Jeff goes out again a couple of weeks later. It's a different serviceman. With the power plant document, why these things happen, you start seeing trends. So Craig and those guys at the power plant do a really, really great job. But you've got great people out in the field. Tree trimming is important. It's very important. And we've got a group of guys that are dedicated and gals that are just dedicated, and they work very, very hard for everybody. But we wanted to share that good news with you folks.
Very good. Thank you to you and your staff and all the guys on the ground.
We're real proud of the 23 minutes.
That's just wonderful, yeah.
I think you can have other crews that kick in on off days to help trim trees and stuff as well, right?
Yes. Everybody's great. And yesterday, I mean, Kathy mentioned earlier, we had the U-Board meeting, and it had been months since we had a U-Board meeting. So we basically did a slideshow yesterday for the U-Board of what had been going on. We had pictures of Route O being under construction, and the old station is out of service right now. If you remember right, we had... The old station's going to be rebuilt into a new station. Then we had an emergency station sitting next to it. The emergency station with three pumps is operational right now and has been for a couple of weeks. So, and we've been doing Cleveland and a few other spots. So we kind of gave the U-Board a refresher to bring them back in and catch them up on what we've been doing. And then we shared this with them, and they asked us. We bring these awards to you guys and let you guys know also.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Where would this outstanding flag be put up at? In the warehouse, in the city hall, what?
We will put it out there in the warehouse where the guys and gals are working.
There you go. Darryl wants to get his picture taken.
He loves to have his picture in the paper.
Smile!
Get Bill right behind him.
Proud of that. That's very good.
All right.
I did remember, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move back to you. Actually, I'm remiss to say that I did skip an item on our new business, so we'll skip back to that when we're done with council concerns. So since I messed up, I'll let you have a free pass. Mr. Stone, what's your concern, sir?
Two items. One is, I recently joined one of our commissions, and we have a member who was going to be going off of that commission after... And we have a member who was going to be going off of that commission after ten years of continuous service. And when I inquired about recognition or any type of memento, it was understood that we, we don't necessarily do that right now for the City of Fulton, for our volunteers that, that serve on our committees and our commissions and our utility boards and park boards and all of that. And I'd like to make a recommendation that we create and present some sort of small, you know, a, a plaque, a, a memento of people's service when they serve at least ten years on one of our, our city commissions or city board. And then my second item is, we had an excellent community conversation last night. And I really appreciate everybody in, in the citizenry that came out, the, the church leaders, the school board, and the city council members and the city administration members that were there last night. It was an excellent conversation. That's it.
Very good. Yeah, I would agree with that completely. So, administratively, would that be possible to do without too much trouble to track that, Courtney?
We already do track, we have historical lists. Now, that being said, I'm not going to vouch for how perfect they are. But overall, we do a pretty good job of having that information for past years. So, I don't see that being anything that's difficult for us to take on.
Yeah, I personally think that would be appropriate and keep things consistent. I know a lot of times, we want to recognize folks, and we just have to keep it consistent, so.
I like the idea that it's going to be not just one year, two years, but if somebody put in ten years, I think that's very notable that we are, recognize that.
Yeah, absolutely. I would entertain a motion, I guess.
Motion to approve a, a board, a recognition for anyone serving on a board for ten-plus years.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
I second it.
Any, any other discussion on that? Uh, Mr. Johnson, do you have any input on that or feelings about that?
It'd be good. We could, it shouldn't be a problem, too much of a problem at all.
Okay.
And maybe just a point of clarification, this would be when these members are outgoing?
At the time that they leave that commission, that committee or that board. In, in that way, it's, you're not trying to keep track of, okay, who's got ten, who's got fifteen, who's got, it, it's just, at the time that they leave, if they've served more than ten years, I, I think the city needs to recognize that volunteer service.
Excellent. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Thank you, Jeff. That's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Uh, Mr. Simmons, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Seibach?
I just wanted to echo Councilman Stone's sentiment about the meeting last night. Um, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend, and I was really pleasantly surprised and pleased with the turnout and the conversation. Just thankful to be a part of that. And I would encourage the other council members to attend if they're able to. Um, just really great discussion, lots of really good, strong leaders in this community that I'm very proud of. So, just echoing that.
Yeah, it was very impressive to see the turnout. I was, I was shocked. So, we may not have got a lot figured out, but we've got some folks that, that care enough to keep the conversation going. So, that's, that's very, really exciting. Thank you, Valerie. Ms. Reclu?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to thank Jeremy and his, his group that keep our grass cut and maintain outside for us. Um, out, off Old Highway, there, does belong, part of the, the highway belongs, of course, to the, to the state. But he helped us out on the areas where it's very dangerous when you come out from Tennessean to O and things like that, and trimmed a little bit extra. And I just want to thank Jeremy and his bunch for, for helping us and keeping things nice and trimmed and safe for our drivers.
They've been busy lately. Very good. Okay, Councilman Braun?
I know we've had a bunch go on in the last, well, since March. And we were in the midst of going through city fees. And I would like to see that come back up and continue through that in a work session or however we choose, however you choose that it comes back up. But we got through part of the departments, and then we, we finished of an evening and didn't move any further. And I do understand that the COVID kind of threw us in the tailspin, but I'd like to see that come back up.
Very good. Yeah, I think things are getting a little bit back to normal now, so start to see some of that stuff come back. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Schiverdicker?
Speaking of getting back to, I guess we can go right back to the new business that you forgot long ago.
Okay, all right. We'll hop to it. Uh, so, item eleven B, our capital budget. Um, I don't see Mr. Boone here.
He's not.
He bailed on us.
He did, with, with permission.
Okay. So, it's on you, sir.
The city charter requires that the city count, that the ma, this, this is actually from the mayor. That the mayor present to the city council at least six months prior to the adoption or the beginning of the next operational budget, which is January. So, by the end of June, uh, the mayor has to present this to the city council. The department heads are asked, a typical year, the, the, this is a wish list, okay? On a typical year. And I think the department heads actually this year went through it once with the wish list in mind. But then, due to the COVID issues, and, you know, I've been pondering and working with Kathy and, and Mr. Boone on coming up with a kind of a COVID two-thousand budget, a twenty-twenty budget as well. I asked the department heads, instead of doing their wish list, I asked them to do kind of a bare bones minimum. What do you really think you're going to have to have? One thing, a couple of things I'd like to say about this document. And there's really no need, there's no need unless somebody wants, wants to go through it. Uh, I will say, just because something is listed in here doesn't mean that it's going to be in the twenty-twenty-one operational budget. Doesn't mean it's going to make it in, uh, come October, November, September, October, November, when we're doing the budget. On the other hand, just because something's not in here doesn't mean that it might not be in the budget, okay? But this is just, it's an activity and an exercise that requires, uh, the department heads and the administration to think about what we're going to be doing for next year, for, for the next couple of years, okay? Um, most of this was designed and drafted prior to the passage of the U-Stacks. So, so on the police and fire side of it a little bit, some of that, some of those numbers and some of those activities and projects may change some. I'm guessing, knowing, knowing the two groups that I know, the numbers are probably going to go up, okay? So, um, but are there any questions on this document? It's, it's just, it's an exercise to make us focus on some of the things we may be needing.
And, and things that are in the twenty-twenty budget could, that's in the list, could potentially move to twenty-twenty-one, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, we went through, with the help of the department heads. You know, I've been, for the past three months, due to, due to COVID, I've been very nervous about the city finances.
Right.
With the assistance of the department heads and Kathy and Mr. Boone, we went through the twenty-twenty operational and, and capital budget pretty, pretty close. Now, there's still a chance that it could, it could go to heck if the, when we do get, when we get the May sales tax reports, if, if they are down a lot, and we're going to have to do another reevaluation. But what we looked at is, we looked at the, just pretty much at the capital side. How much capital did we have budgeted for twenty-twenty? How much of that capital was necessary and essential and vital versus upgrades, versus improvements, versus, um, can we get, can we get another year before we, before we buy something? I think, I think I'm going to sit here tonight and say, I'm, I'm very comfortable unless things go drastically south for an extended period of time, that we'll be, we'll be just fine in twenty-twenty with, uh, drawing back on some of the capital expenditures that we have budgeted. If we, we, we kind of restrict those and say, no, we're not going to, we're not going to buy it this year. We're going to, we've already bought a lot of stuff. But we're just going to hold back on some of the, and then just because we're, just because we're stopping tonight or, you know, two or three weeks ago, when we kind of put this plan together, we kind of said, okay, whoa, stop on the, stop on some of the big capital. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not going to happen this year. Let's, I'm just saying, it's, it's not going to happen in June or July, probably not August. But by the time we get around to mid-August, September, towards the end of the year, and we see that the revenue's coming in, we may be able to, uh, go back to some of those capital items and say, yeah, let's, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead. Last thing I want is for the city to have any financial issues. All right? That's, that's the capital budget. It does not need approved. It, the mayor is just simply making the presentation to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's addressed to the mayor, so it's kind of weird. To the mayor. I can't take much credit for it, but thank you for putting that together. I know Robert's been working on it quite a bit, and will continue to be over the next months. And it's just keeping good housekeeping, uh, like we're all doing right now, watching our pennies, seeing what the economy's doing, and being prudent and, uh, conservative. So, thank you for watching our pennies. So, we'll be looking for more on this over the next few months. Uh, any questions on that? We do not need action, so we'll move on with resolutions. Okay, Councilwoman Seibach, if you would present resolution number thirty-three seventy-seven.
Yes, sir. Resolution number thirty-three seventy-seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, adopting the Callaway All-Hazard Mediation Plan. I make a motion to place, excuse me, I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-three seventy-seven at this council meeting.
Second. Very good. A motion in a second is on the floor. Is there any discussion on this? I know we had a little typo or something from, uh, the state.
There is, as, as you read through the three hundred pages, there is, there is a lot of little things throughout it. And Courtney and I have talked about it. I don't know how it gets resolved at this point, or if it even is a fact, if it matters at all. But there is many, many, many different issues within the document.
I guess my recommendation would be, um, it's, it's a document that allows the planning commission of the City of Fulton to be eligible for some grants and that type of thing. I guess my recommendation would be approve it tonight. We have it, we, we.
Oh, yeah, I have no intention.
We can get it, we can get it in word form. But then, over the next month, if, if you want to read the, I think it's actually four hundred pages. If you want to read and go through the four, three or four hundred pages and highlight some of the changes and some of the things that need correcting, just get those back to us. And we'll go in and make the changes and, I mean, we, we're not, we have no intention of printing you a copy. We'll, we'll, we'll email you a, a cop, electronic copy. But it's just one of those things we, we need to have, we need to have available. And it was, it's actually a two thousand seventeen plan. And I don't understand why we didn't adopt and approve it then, but somehow we.
And what was the one that we did adopt?
The Callaway County Emergency Management Plan.
The emergency.
Yeah, that would be emergency.
And so, another thing I had talked with a, a few of you about expressing some concerns about those issues. We can definitely go that avenue and try to get a word document. Or if you, um, I know some of you have already put some of those thoughts together. If you just want to send me that in an email, I can definitely send that to the Minnesota Regional Planning Commission. And we can let them know that we've noted those issues. Like Bill said, uh, it is a twenty-seventeen document. So, the likelihood of them changing it at this point is not likely. But we should make them aware of any concerns we have at this point.
Very good. Any other questions on, on that resolution? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Thirty-three seventy-seven will move on to ordinance. Okay, ordinances tonight, we have one. Uh, Councilman Simmons, if you would, present fifteen eighty-two.
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen eighty-two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement by the City of Fulton, Missouri to finance a community center for the city and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection thereof. I make a recommendation, we advance bill number fifteen eighty-two from the first reading to second reading in the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Any discussion on this?
My, my only discussion that I would have, well, there's a couple of, and I understand that some of the issues have been brought up by somebody else as well. But I only saw one document from Central Bank. Is there another document for Callaway Bank? Are we doing, are we using both Callaway and Central Bank?
Yes. Ca, Central Bank is the lead bank.
Okay. Okay. So, we won't have a document from Callaway as well? And then, all the rates and everything have been changed? I know we were, we were concerned not to exceed the five percent.
And a max of five percent.
Thank you.
The current rate was, uh, three point six?
No.
Not three point one?
That's, that's construction loan.
Thank you. I saw the three point six, and I, I was a little confused. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that.
And the construction money will only be, we'll, we'll draw it down. It's not a lump sum. It will draw it down. As we draw it down, we'll begin paying and paying interest on it.
Okay. I will call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Okay, we'll move that forward. Would you have announcements? Our next meeting will be, our city council meeting will be July fourteenth. A work session, we'll go back to that at six-thirty. Um, regular session to follow at seven. I also just want to briefly give a shout out to our local, um, businesses that have committed to donating to our fireworks display. Um, it looks like we're going to be upwards of halfway, um, halfway there. So, um, we're doing, looking pretty good. We have, um, Dollar General has committed, Walmart, uh, C N R Markets, Moers, Ameren U E, uh, the Fulton Street Fair. They have, uh, decided that since they did not do their fireworks, they're going to commit some funds to, to our fireworks show. So, kudos to them, um, and the Callaway Bank. So, as we get more, if we get more, I will, uh, announce that again. And we'll be advertising a little bit in the newspaper on that, too. So, we appreciate the support there. Okay. I did say Moers, yep. Yep, Roger threw in some money, so we appreciate that. Um, he's always good to support the community. Um, are there any other announcements? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Let's go on.